The red sand. That's one, yeah, that's one of their trailers, but that's not even their command trailer.
Says Mobile Operations. Mobile Operations, Operations Center. It says Featherlight Command Center. It's a brand, right? Or is it like this?
No, that's not hers. Just the other meeting that they want to be doing on a Saturday? The last meeting? Which was great. Good work. Don't have to be in there. Well, maybe, no, sorry. Nothing. All the signs are. Hey, don't tell her to use little tricks in that email today.
Good evening, everyone. Walked into the city council for the 1st of April. And official call to Spanish order. First item on the agenda is to approve the shutdowns. And.
I think we need to remove the oath of office from the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, he won't be here for the oath, but just approval for the hire.
Okay. The chief and Officer Steele and I have a raise of time, or we'll take care of that oath of office.
So with that amendment, I would remove approval of the agenda.
Exactly. Move second to approve the agenda with one adjustment. Ready to vote on that, all okay with that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. What's your queries? Communications section, first item is on schedule part, if there's anybody here that's here to speak something that is not on the agenda. If you hear something that is on the agenda, just waiting for that part, the agenda to, we'll get to that part. And I think we have some representatives. Let them do the introductions and so on, and we've got samples of what exists. All your agree?
Is this on?
Just push the button. There's nobody on anyway, but. There you go. Should be green. Greenlit, alright.
I'm Marie DeBree, I'm with the Moberen Area Arts Council and offer then a sculpture trail committee. And Bob and I are here to start with.
I'm the chairman of Parks and Art Commission Sculpture Trail Committee.
We are here because the city has once again contributed to the sculpture trail, which we're so very thankful for. And we put it on our, our P I, our request proposal this winter. We got 24 applications, really strong applications from not only all over the country, but from China, Russia, and Canada. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Can't do those because they'd be terrible.
Well, yeah. That, that did present itself. But we, after several meetings, we have made a selection, and I believe you have a photograph of the, of the sculpture. It's called Feathers Three. The artist is Kirk Sees, and he is from Maryland.
The, hopefully you've received a rough map of the sculpture trail that they sent up. And the placement that we're looking at for this Feathers Three is adjacent to First Street. And kind of down in the pockets, so that when you walk down the trail, it'll be the first thing on your right. The feathers stand at 10, 12, and 14 feet tall, so when you're down on the trail, you'll be looking up at them. But also when you're on the street, you'll be seeing the light level. So you'll be able to see them from many angles and very diverse creations with color and materials. That will be different than anything we've had on the trail.
Bob, is that where the one was removed and put down?
No, it's beneath, beneath it. That, that location where the one was removed is going to be a sign that announces the trail in Debriga. We just putting that together for us, so.
Right, there's, there's two other sculptures going in in 2025, and the Boulder by Debriga, which is really signage. That will be on Main Street, where we moved a sculpture down from Main Street. And then we're also, we're also getting a sculpture from Dale Merrill. That's being underwritten by the Garners, and that is going in also in 2025. And that will go, it's an archway, and it will go at the other end of the trail. Those are separate from, from the Three Feathers. The Three Feathers will probably be installed late summer or early fall.
And we have two other pieces from David, I think.
We do, but.
Underway.
I'm gonna get ahead of myself there.
Yes, but, but we, we have, with the map we put out and the estimates of places and the potential of adding curved walkway extension. At least in rough figuring, this should last at least another 10 years. So we can keep our sculpture trail in kind of a contiguous area between First and Third Street. Maybe spilling over to the gazebo area on the north side of First Street. So the one. Yeah. Great job on the map, greatly appreciated. Feathers are nice with the, the earth tones. I see the sky, the grass, the trees, the, the earth. Very well done. My question with the potential placement of future sculptures is, do you have a total cost of what that will be over 10 years? The sculptures themselves or the installation of a walking paths, so those are two different. The sculptures themselves. At, at the rate that, can we speak through that?
Well, that's city determined. We kind of just fundraise as we go. We, we've been writing grants, we've been approaching the city, obviously, as you know. The Moberen Area Arts Council has been contributing money that it raises, and they've set aside some of the money that they've been raising, that we've been raising for the sculpture trail. So it's a combination of that, and it's hard to say, you know.
So the answer is no, you don't have a hard.
We don't have a budget for the next 10 years. We just thought we would put the map together just so people would have an idea that more sculptures can go in, so.
And again, just looking at this. Feels like it's a lot. Like, you'll see, you won't be able to focus on one because you'll have, with this amount of sculptures, it seems to me like you'd be almost in a.
Well, actually, that's just places that where, that could, that where sculpture could be located. It doesn't mean we're going to fill all that in. It just means that those are areas along the path where we could place one. Because there's some areas where you get, because there's a tree there, or there's, it's too hilly or something. We were just trying to find spots that would actually be able to hold a sculpture.
I, I thought the same thing. Actually, when I looked at this, I thought of a wall with too many paintings on it.
Oh, you've been in my house.
I was thinking of this castle I was in in Scotland a couple of weeks ago, and you walk in, and there isn't an inch of wall space because there's so many, of course, the frames are bigger than that TV. But anyway, and that's what I thought, so it's good to know that I'm less worried about the cost of it because I figured that we either have the money or we won't, as far as that's concerned. But the, yeah, it looked to me like it was going to be a little overwhelming, a little busy.
We just wanted to find places to walk in the path, and sometimes the sculpture won't work in a certain place, so then we say, well, they can go over here.
Yeah, great.
When, when I created the map, the detail of tree placements is a little unknown because the walkway has not been placed. And so I was just kind of getting slap happy with InDesign and Photoshop just to see what's possible. But the bottom line is, if, if we keep consistent, and Paul, if you're asking. So far, every year, $15,000 has been the target and has been raised thanks to various sources, including council. And, and I don't know what the future holds. Individual generosity helped us our first year, and it's helping us the second year. So you, you have, we have a base, and then you have individual generosity. Thank you.
Did you guys talk about the proposed timeline, please? I don't know if I'm listening to what the plan is.
For additional sculptures?
No, for the installation.
Oh, for.
For the Three Feathers?
Yeah. The Three Fe- oh. Late summer, early.
Okay, sorry, I understand.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, yeah, it's amazing, I love it.
Well, I think I said this last time, we're kind of amazed that it's gone as quickly, I mean, that we have as many sculptures as we do in just a couple of years. We, we, we were thinking, oh, if we can do one a year, that would be awesome, but things have looked out better than that, so.
Our first, first year, we had two sculptors that basically negotiated price to fit within the budget. So as a result, we got four pieces instead of one for the first year, which is a pretty good deal.
You guys, thank you for your vision and all the detailed work that comes after that, too.
Help shape the culture of the community, appreciate that.
We want to make something that's worth visiting and that draws people from the region, if not nationally. But gotta take the first step, and you're doing that, so.
This is example of that.
And I, I always have to give a shout out to Allen because he's always very self operative, and, and the city forced the pads for these sculptures, and that's obviously critical. So without that, there would, there would be issues.
Thank you to your groups and Public Works for making it happen, and I hope to get any other questions or comments, so appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you much. Any other items for public commentary? I want to move to the consent agenda, with two items with, on the consent agenda. Paul and Mark, you selected to approve the consent agenda, and if you're ready to go on that, all okay with that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? What's your queries? Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the consideration of the Moberen fiscal year '25, '26, proposed annual budget. Officially open the public hearing. Good. Multiple attachments, but regarding all things financial here, does staff have anything to add, or any comments come into City Hall?
No, no comments from individually. The only comment that I would have is. Currently, what you see is going to be tossed out the window next year, so. Just FYI.
Let's spend a bunch of time on that.
There's, um, there's a lot of intrigue, so half a dozen slides that rev, obviously revolve around rollback will be gone if the new property tax legislation is forward. So the current bills that were reintroduced get rid of the rollback in a year instead of five. So, you know, we kind of track this on a day-to-day basis, and, I mean, we do know that something's going to happen. They're not going to get out of this legislative session without coming to a compromise on, on property tax legislation. But it will forever change the outlook of this budget, and when I met with Officer Steele today, I can't even tell you what that looks like yet. Yes, we would have, you know, a hard cap minus new growth, so it's going to continue to pressure it in on communities to try to grow. If you want to get dollars outside of that 2% cap, that's the only way you're going to be able to do it. It is going to drive down the levy rate rather quickly. Obviously, you're bringing in, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 220 to probably 250 million in new valuation that you currently lose because of rollback. The exemption, the credit that you're given under the current bill went from 25,000 to 50,000, so they did increase that to kind of offset some of. Any change on the residential side. So to a certain extent, it'll get easier for me to explain, so I don't have to explain rollback to anybody anywhere, which is nice. But I'm not sure what our levy rate does play yet, so we have opportunities to move some of our debt over to the debt service. Since we're going to be dropping levy, we're just gonna have to kind of play by here, so it'll be a whole new ballgame next year.
So my request for that fighter comparison is moot.
Will be. It'll be, it'll be really awkward if you have a fighter, yeah. Because everything will be off. You know, you and I, you know, we talked about just the debt service alone, and our, our debt service increased by 4 million in one year, went from like, just over 16 million, almost 5 million. Over 16 million to 21 million. So excuse the numbers. And even though we have something like 8 million dollars that's kind of hanging out there, there'll be some of the questions that you have to talk about in the future. That, that 20% went from, you know, 2.5 to 3 million, set aside, to over 4 million right now. So now you have to decide whether or not you want to not have 20% or is it 15% now that, you know, that number is higher. So all of that, I think, will be, we'll have more budget discussions when we can see how the general effects are going to be. But mainly, we're going to have conversations about that service and what, just about every bond that we sell, every bond that we sold since I've been here, say, one, has been, has been our obligation debt, meaning you could tax it. We, we pay for it in different places, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we could move some of that into the debt service to not get that property tax obligation to go down so far so quick. TIP is going to be affected. Those, and we, I would say 100% of our, our, our TIP agreements are what are considered annual appropriation rebates. So if you're expecting a rebate based upon a TIP level of 31 dollars per thousand, and all of a sudden it becomes like 16 dollars per thousand. You're only gaining 10% as a commercial entity back in value, so you're going to see a dip under the current proposal, unless you get back annually. Residential, I don't think will be hit quite as hard with the two residential TIPS that we have, because all of that value comes in at the same time, so that might offset. The decrease in the, in what's considered typical taxes, so, yeah, I don't know. I'll be anxious to see how, how it works when it's all said and done, and I am still kind of hoping that that, that hard cap comes in at 2.5% versus 2%.
Well, the good news on this is that it's going to happen to all 975 communities in Iowa. All 100 or so that are our size are, so you'll be able to talk with your colleagues.
So it'll also impact the counties.
Yeah, it's gonna, well, obviously, the school, the state's taking a portion of their property tax and absorbing it into their general fund so that their wife can knock out 400 million. Between 400 and 500 million off the property tax book in England. Here's where I think it's going to really be intriguing, it's going to create a class system amongst Iowa cities. The reason I say that is those cities that are not growing whatsoever are going to struggle, and will, because those are typically the communities that are paying the, the sheriff's office for these services. You know, a 2% cap, we have inflation like we did at 7% to 8%, can't sustain too many years with inflation that high and a cap of 2% without some sort of growth. So what, what will really get intriguing is, is those communities that are growing and can afford to pay are going to continue to afford to pay, and those that cannot are going to continue to lose. And I may, I don't want you to call out this community, but I look at like somewhere like Belle Plaine that already struggles to keep police officers, and we are the beneficiary of that. Just like Marion's the beneficiary of us. They're going to continue to struggle, 2% cap on, on a community like Belle Plaine that doesn't grow. Means you can't afford to pay higher wages for the police officers that are requiring, so that, you know, some of the back the blue and the, and the fire and so on. So, you know, some of what is coming out in this bill, I would be the first to admit is, is good. Getting rid of the rollback, just for sheer discussion purposes. I can't tell you how many times I've spent at my daughter's soccer game trying to explain this to people, because they, they got in their tax bills and they don't understand what's going on. So that will help, but I'm anxious to see how the numbers work out.
So in essence, communities and/or counties, so for example, my son's moving from Ankeny to Adel. Dallas County is growing between Wonkie and Adel and a number of other communities. It's, it's, because of that growth, they're going to be able to continue to have services and add services and do that type of thing. And then a, you know, more rural county that has very few communities growing are going to pay the price.
Yeah, or they're just going to have to stay stagnant, or, you know, stay, they're not going to see, you know, the types of increases that will keep them in the market when it comes to water, wastewater superintendents. So that part of it's intriguing to me to see how it's going to unfold, and I've never been a, a Chicken Little kind of guy. Like, I'm not going to sit here and say the sky is falling because of this bill coming forward. It's going to be like everything else, we're going to adapt, and we'll continue to, to move forward, it's just going to be different. And on one hand, you're talking about 200 million dollars in valuation coming on the tax rolls in a matter of a year, minus the home state credit. But that's significant. I mean, when you're paying taxes on 46 and 47% of your value, and it goes up to 100%, even with homes, I'm, I'm anxious to see what those numbers look like. The other thing is I still don't think they fixed the problem. And the problem is, your, your reestimate, your reevaluation that occurs on every odd year is really where people start to like panic. So when your, your housing value goes up by 75,000 dollars in, in one year, now you don't have a rollback to fall back on, like. That portion of the problem hasn't been discussed yet, and I am curious as to how that's going to unfold. So we'll see, I don't know. As I, I told one of our representatives, we'll figure it out, we, we've done it every year for the last 95 years, I've been in it. Hopeful about the way that I said that.
Does my jaw cut it off?
But, but, you know, the, the truth is, we, we do, we adapt every year, and there are 975 cities, and we all discuss, I mean, we're all going to figure this out together. I will, I, I can't sit here and bash on the legislature, they are taking input from the Dega Cities and, and other entities, so this is one of the first times where they're not just throwing a bill at us and, and saying, you know, here it is. They did, you know, scrap the last, their first version, and instead of trying to amend out everything that they had come to, to want to change, they said, I would scrap those and then reintroduce two bills that are very similar, but just had made all of those changes. So, yeah, I mean, there are some things that are consistent, capital projects, we still have some carryover, we're still going to have to figure out what to do with the Davis Park Shelter. You know, I would say that there's a reason I haven't really earmarked franchise fees. This will be the first year where we actually get the cap treatment, and the capital project, but anyway, you see, First Street, all would argue, needed to be resurfaced, but it wasn't something that was on the capital improvements plan. It was something Lynn County came forward and said, hey, we'll let you finance it through us for three years, let's do good to pass up. So I would say the number one street project has gone to 10th from Summit to Yugobies. Caps is still in need, that would be number two, but 10th has quickly climbed the ladder, similar to what Fort did last year. So I can't guarantee you that that project would start in fiscal year '26. Depends on the cost, but it could start in the summer of 2026, or it would be fiscal year '27, not for everybody, but.
They could put a parking lot in that house while they're doing it.
We could while we're there, and we'd take the asphalt millions and just go ahead and do.
Just pave the whole thing, Howard.
Yeah, for a bad way.
Go front yards.
You know, there, there are other things that are hanging, we know we have a million dollars hanging out there for, for the highway one reconstruction, that's 2027. We know that we're probably somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, we don't already say it's 5 million. Yes, it was closer to 4. By the time that we get started, it's probably 5 million to, to the downtown street. So we don't, we have no projects, we have the childcare potential at the LBC, so there's, a lot, I think a lot of what's going to happen is, is interim projects where we have small pockets of money and staff time. So the trail out in front of the Public Works is a perfect example of, from a, use about half of what we normally would, probably a third of what we normally would by just mining the concrete and letting the Public Works staff, you know, actually build the trail. So I think we're just gonna have to be more creative, and I think other cities are gonna have to do similar things. I do feel very lucky with the amount of expertise that we have and, you know, 30 or 40 employees across the board here versus communities that have, you know, 200. I would put our crew up against, against them all. So we're lucky a little bit in that we're, we're able to do some of that work.
Who would argue that we are lucky if more than just a little bit, not just from the staffing, but also from past councils. Not only that I've been part of, but previous to that, and through city leadership and our consistent 20% withholding and, and safety net. I think we saw that evidence in the R H L and everything, we, we had no idea what was going on or where any of the funding was going to happen, but we were able to respond and do what needed to be done. Because we had been cautious and conservative, but also able to, through staff's expertise, figure out ways to do the things that the city needed us to do. Not just in keeping the lights on, but also stuff like a sculpture trail and pool, and, you know, just those amenities. We've been able to stave off, at least for the time being, conversations about what are we going to cut. So I would, I would argue we've been more than just a little lucky.
Yeah, and I am hopeful with the proposed changes to property tax that some of the, the fights that we've had to take with water and sewer would be offset by maybe a reduction in property tax payments in the coming years. But even that, we can, like I said, we can do some of those projects that are currently being paid with water and sewer revenues into, into the debt service because they're general obligation debt. So we could, you know, we could theoretically do that and then stave off having to increase rates, you know, the next couple of years. So there's some, there's some intrigue there that I'm, I'm excited to see how it all plays out, as long as it doesn't change significantly from what's been presented so far. But yeah, my whole presentation will be scrapped. Next year, probably replaced, just, just because half the slide will be gone.
I mean, if there's a large number of towns in that 950, 975 towns in Iowa that are under 500 people, it's pretty close to a lot of towns that are dissolved.
Yeah, there's, you know, depending on what you look at right now, from incorporated to unincorporated, when you talk to the league, it's 975. When you talk to the league, it's 975 and start looking at the data that's like down to 947. So it's just like, it's so weird to like try and figure out where happens to happen.
Which seems like such a basic question. You know, I mean, it just, and I get that there's all these shades of gray, but how many cities are there in?
When you go onto the Department of Management website to pull all that information, which is where I pull a comparison on the various cities. Not one of them, not one of those spreadsheets has the same number of cities listed. So when you're trying to put a PowerPoint together, the whole time I'm thinking, yeah, if I get this wrong, the league's gonna call me out on this and say, what are you doing? But it comes right from the Department of Management. So.
Still open as far as the public hearing is concerned. Are there any other comments, questions, questions from staff? Otherwise, I will close the public hearing at seven o'clock straight up and move to G1, which is a resolution for approval. 421, approving the city of 164 years, 25, 26 annual budget. See, that's our presentation, which we've all probably been looking at here.
I would move approval of the resolutions presented.
Thank you all. One second, Matt Paul Gray. It's moved a second to approve this particular resolution on the annual budget. And that is a roll call vote, and I think it's Marsha.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Engrison?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to motion for approval, claims list that Marsha sent out this afternoon. Questions, Ron, anything to pull off or move forward with it?
Move approval of the claims list was presented.
Thank you, Paul.
One second.
It's seconded to approve the claims list. There are no other questions or comments. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Second item for motion for approval is consideration of the application of three of 2024 sanitary sewer improvements. Council action as needed.
Payout is an amount of $99,432.91. This represents just over 50% of the payout. This is reimbursement that will come from Lynn County through the ARPA funding that they granted to see.
Unless there are questions, I would move approval of payout on number three for the 2024 sanitary sewer improvements.
Okay. Moving second to move forth, the second item here, application number three. If there's no other comments or questions, bring the board on that. Voice vote, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration of the application number six, 2024 pool renovations. Council action as needed.
Uh, this payout case is in the amount of $96,425. Yes, you've already approved seven. The engineer forgot to send six, so.
I would move approval of the payout case number six, 2024 pool reservations in the amount of $96,425.
All expected. How can you forget to send invoice maintenance?
Wilshire was wondering the same thing since it was their check, but it's interesting. So we do, we find this after the fact typically, because when Marsha puts it in her computer to, you know, cut a check, she'll like, she makes notes. But we obviously don't cut checks until after you make approval. So after you approved seven, she's like, I don't see why you issued a check in six. And then, so you reach out to the engineer and they're like, oh, did I not record that on? And then like, well, I don't have an email from you, so apparently not. But they they have to approve the quantities and make sure that everything is complete. So, yes, Wilshire would have been very compromised to this process.
Well.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say I still was learning how to drive, so we did some laps in the pool parking lot and it looks good over there. It's fun to see.
When you.
And the pro, the whole profile is different with the slides and everything. It just still looks very cool.
They they were, they've been working on Saturdays and Jeff had told us that the last couple Saturdays, kids have come up to the fence.
I'm sure.
And staring through it.
Said one of them, one of the kids was like, oh, cool, look at the kids area.
I guess the public works crew does the same thing.
What are the first rentals is gonna be?
I I will say this, I do, I am excited about the fact that, you know, this, what we're doing now should speak to our issues for 10 to 15 years. So I do think the money that is spent today really elongates that pool and will allow some other things to happen. We'll see whether or not someone decides to build a pool at some point in the future. How much, you know, Marion and Southside Sierra after this fan, so I see a lot of those people visit our pool right now. And, you know, building a 12 to 13 million dollar pool based upon those numbers, when you know they can get subject to change in the next 10 years, is a bit scary for me. But, yeah, so, you know, especially when the the exterior gets painted and then you get to go in and see the the bathrooms, locker rooms.
I can start signing this week.
Yeah, a couple of other purchases that you look at tonight. I mean, all in all, I think outside of a couple of features, it will look pretty brand new.
Well, I know my my daughter goes over there, you know, in that area, takes walks over there. And, you know, when I go over in that area, it looks really nice. The children, who are all scared, they they're they're extremely happy with what they're seeing, especially with that big side of that. So I think it's gonna be a much better, much better, good improvement what it was. And we still are able to provide, you know, if another big pool comes in, it's all there. We still have ours and we can still provide swimming lessons, which I think is just the most important, one of the most important things also. So I think it's great. It's a good decision.
I think we need to pipe out anticipation of a song by Carole Simon.
It's exciting that the kids are here, it's exciting.
It started out as a stopgap, couple of years gets through, so we don't have to worry about it for a little while. Take, turn it into a multi-decade, that that this project's taken care of for a long, long time, we don't have to worry about it.
You know, the part that won't be able, you won't be able to necessarily see is the amount of improvements they made to the basin, putting in a gutter pump and gutters. In gutters and and you'll still see where, even with the white basin, you'll still see where there's larger cracks. But they've done such an excellent job of of sealing those. If you have an opportunity to go in there and wanna go, wanna go down there, just let me know. The best place I can show you is in the deep end.
If you're gonna throw them in.
So if you look at the 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 deep end has, it converges to two intakes, two recycling intakes.
I know, you can't see those right now.
And. The corners coming down to it, you know, staffs from the past did an excellent job of trying to to mitigate water loss there, but they they more or less suck. Two after two with cock. What these guys did when they came in to seal, but not only did they, I don't even know how much seal they put on there, but they they smoothed it in such a manner that it actually looks concertly. So that's the part that when you, when it is clean and you can actually see the bottom, I'm most anxious for it because it does, doesn't make the pool look that much nicer. And replacing the entirety of the deck wasn't expensive, but it does a lot. We've got some leaf stamps.
Oh, they're so cool.
In the kid area. They are practically kind of neat when you go in.
What are they?
Yeah, because all the leaves were coming in when they were pouring back in the fall.
Oh, unintentional.
It's so cool though. It looks really neat.
And I would say.
So that can be part of the sculpture.
I'm actually anxious for the heating system. It looks like it's going to be much easier for us from a mechanical standpoint to to say of operating. And it's zoned off, so I think the pool itself should still.
You know, from from my perspective, having gone through so many years of the decisions to patch this and try to find what needs fixed here and there. I think it just speaks to the, you know, leadership and the work done and the research and to really step back and say, as great as Public Works is in doing a lot of things, and I mean, I'm amazed at what we're getting accomplished with our public works department. Again, it speaks to Eldon's leadership, Chris's leadership, but it also speaks to the employees we have. They take pride in that. But it, to me, really exemplifies that sometimes you have to take a step back and say, you know what? We need the right people doing and it's gonna cost us, but it's gonna be worth it in the long term. I never imagined we would be talking about 10 to 15 years of extended life of this pool when we started this discussion. And it speaks more to the council, the mayor and staff that we have gawkers at a construction project in essence. So I'm very pleased.
Another plus to this is the water consumption that we've had in the past. It's gonna be far less, really sealed things up and we're not gonna be losing $20,000 a day.
Yeah, the hole will be nowhere.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, it's, people aren't gonna see that, but it's gonna be evident.
That's what that number is.
Yeah. After things are up and running, yeah.
And big date with what I've heard was a 90% punch list in a couple of days, so.
Are we still on track for one sec?
What?
Are we still on track?
Every single one of you. Sooner or later, Nate's gonna answer.
There's not a policeman.
They would, they would like to be filling, filling the pool by the first of May, so. For for the slides and diving boards and other exterior, we'll be able to punch list quite a bit of that out. The interior work, they're gonna be continuing to complete here for the next couple of weeks and, you know, possibly into the start of of the season where we might have to pick the day, close one locker room down completely, so they can just get it, get it done and get out. So we're gonna, at this point, gonna meet the the schedule. We're gonna have a little few hiccups, I think, throughout the summer, and then just finalize things. But, yeah, I do wanna thank the council. I always chalk this this pool up and and Matt and I have talked about this since the day I walked through through the doors here. It's like been the bane of my exist- existence because I hate it. And in our, my conversations with Matt, there's, you know, just staff had a vision, staff wanted to do some things. I'm never given permission to kind of work with them. And I think what you see is kind of the combination of this will work and this will work. This is what we need. And if we just spend, you know, what amounts to about 10% of the money of brand new, this this pool should should last.
It's a compromise budget, it's one that we're pretty happy about.
I, for one, would love a walk through before the water goes in, so I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll take you down there and and Woodard is very understanding. They kind of opened the gates up and when you walk out, they didn't explain anything to you.
With all that, we do have a motion on the floor, moved a seconded for application of six of the pool renovations. If there's no other comments or questions, bring the board on that. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Can we go on to JEO Consulting Group invoice for the uptown speaker, a plan?
It's in the amount of $8,974.51. Yeah, obviously, you saw the report, your update, so very happy, very pleased with where that pocket's at.
So move to, I'd move to approve JEO Consulting Group invoice number 160285, the amount of $8,974.51.
Clear marks there. Moving second to move forth, the JEO Consulting Group invoice as listed. If you're ready to vote on that one, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Next is discussion consideration of the table purchases as part of the pool renovations project. Do you want tacky tables and tacky chairs around that beautiful wall?
Picnic tables look great for the other park. There's the old red stained wood tables, but when you start looking at them, because they're still sitting inside that fence, in comparison to what's being done, it looks god awful. And that was, I, I mean, that was kind of my point before is, you know, we put, when I first walked through the door, you guys had, the city had put computers in and done a couple of other. I mean, they spent close to half a million dollars and it it changed the appearance zero. So, you know, for $13,500 and up to $15,000 for the chairs. Like I said, it'll have, outside of the exterior fencing, it will have a new look. The buildings will still be the same, but based on what I'm seeing from from the kids, I think they're very excited about it.
What other, what's the material, it seems perforated metal, is it coated?
The ones at Bryant Park, Matt, it's a coated metal?
No, you're talking about the chairs or the tables?
Tables.
The tables are like a polymer steel, so I've got pictures, need it.
It's not exactly the polywood recycled plastic stuff that.
Oh, that's exactly what I was envisioning and hoping for.
Some assembly will be required.
I know.
They're delivering them like that?
Yeah, that's what I.
They didn't deliver mine like that. The other.
The first thing.
They're coming on a pallet and they're 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 handling them that way.
Cool, because they're heavy.
They can stack them, they can stack them, they said.
The the chairs have a five-year warranty.
These have a 20-year, sorry.
Those chairs.
The tables have.
Tables, no, I would say, so the current chairs have a one-year warranty. These have a five-year warranty. As Matt, I'm just gonna talk about more reasons, uh, state time, but the current lounge chairs, being the hard plastic, if they break, there's no, there's no fixing them, at least with these straps. If a strap breaks, we can, we can replace that. Longer warranties, quality materials.
I'm guessing just by looking at the invoice, is it there, it doesn't, it's not the one with the umbrella in the middle?
We we do not pick out umbrellas. We have the capabilities of doing that.
We do have, I wanna, we kind of wanna wait and see where we're gonna place these in comparison to the shade structures. And then we would order umbrellas if we needed to.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm interested to see where the shade structures are too, because I know that we were short of those a bit at the last setup.
The fact that move approval of the table purchase for the pool, that took the same person, $1,500, no.
One second.
All expected on that one. Approve the table purchases. If there are no further questions, bring the board on, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Same theme here, lounge chair purchases for the pool. Same team here, lounge chair purchases for the pool.
I would move approval of the purchase of plumb chairs for the pool, cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
One second.
Paul Scotty. Moving seconded to approve the lounge chair purchases. If there's no other comments or questions, ready to vote on that? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
I do have a quick question for Matt.
Motion carries.
Yeah, there's fifty in here. How many do we have currently? They are very popular.
Yeah, well, we only have maybe like twenty of these type.
Yeah.
And they're like hard plastic.
Yeah. They are very popular, and I remember, you know, the second somebody leaves one, there's always something.
Yeah, it's, it's...
So I'm glad to hear that.
That's why we decided to go with a larger quantity. And we've increased the deck a little bit too, the size of it, so we'll have more room to put all of these, so.
It's great.
Then there's discussion consideration of audit services. Well, they'll, I mean, they come up.
Maybe I might add something about the student together, full small increases. Bradley does all the state forms for us, the tipper works monthly, reconciliably, he needs monthly, right easily, so it's kind of an invaluable key. Went up by under seven bucks, so very small increase. The auditors went up by under a thousand dollars. Something to keep an eye on, this is something kind of like your own company, you keep it for three or four years, and then once they raise their fee, it's to where you were at before, then you go out and see if they're still below it. We're not quite there yet, they're, they're fine, so we'll recommend both, move forward both.
And we use both for...
Rather number a year. The current auditors for three. This would be a period of...
With that, move approval of the auditing services contract with Ronald Bell Kim and Company in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred a year.
Second, that's that Craig, move seconded to approve the audit contract. If there are no further questions, all, ready to vote on that? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Then I would move to approve the contract with Bradley
Hocky Green?
At seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. One second. Craig and Scott. Moving seconded to approve CPA proposal for accounting services. There's a little side here, I went to the, taking breakfast last Saturday, boy, I just sat down at the table, and some guy sits down beside me, we start talking, and I knew some stuff and so on, you know, it was Brad Eby. I've never seen the name ever. He's probably our longest-term employee of the city, and I said, I can't believe, I can't believe. He says, you're on the agenda tomorrow. I actually met him, and he exists, so. We argued whether he was using some of his hard-earned money to buy pancakes and stuff.
That, that justifies the buck seventy-five increase.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve Brad for the, the proposal for accounting services. And if we're ready to vote on that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The questions to be filed, Mount Vernon's, police reports.
My thing in addition to the report you have is we received notice this week that the annual GTSB grant that we get, we were awarded that again. Fourteen thousand some odd dollars for the overtime enforcement for OWI and impaired driving, and then seatbelt and distracted driving. In addition to that, we also received, I applied for some pedestrian traffic safety funding from them, which was a new application for us. And we were awarded that as well for eight thousand some dollars, they'll be working with to try to improve pedestrian signage near A Avenue and First Street. And then maybe down by the college, look at different locations down there, so. Got awarded both of those, which was good.
So, three to five incidents?
It's, we've been a little busy.
Yeah. Are they trying to make you, you know?
Yes. I told them they could calm down a little bit, but they, you know, it's, it's been steady for sure, as it's going.
It's springtime, Ward.
Yep.
I guess so, it's calm.
You have comments for Chief? Otherwise, moving to Public Works for Eldon, take some pictures, and you have been busy. It's been work.
Not so busy, I didn't get very many pictures.
Our loss. Comments, questions?
I would just echo your sentiments about the center. Just, it looks, the work that has been done down there is recognized, it made a huge difference, so thank you for that.
Okay, go by and talk.
Hey, that's...
And soon they'll be digitized.
I think we're looking at different methods of burial too, so we have some choices there.
That's a word, my, I can make a narrative of great.
I have the tanks on Pat, they look sharp too. Any other questions for Eldon? Otherwise, moving to Parks and Rec with Mr. Cyders. Saturday, I'd say, three thousand eggs, really?
Three thousand eggs. They were all gone. Fifteen minutes.
That's my favorite part of the whole, it takes people longer to get down there and organize than it does to actually run.
Months of planning, fifteen minutes, done.
It's like Thanksgiving Day.
Yep.
More wedding.
Both great events on that Saturday. Cole Ever reports, Gray Center, report in. See your frequently, everything else to add, or any questions left here? Moving on to, we want some mayor council administrator. I guess I mentioned three things here. First of all, took a tour with Joe Jensen and Brayden Bospor.
Rudy?
Of Republic, the recycling center in, in the Hawkeye Downs, so that was a contribution, couple hours, going through the recycling center that they have there. So we'll learn a little bit more about Republic. This Saturday is going to be Mount Vernon cleanup day, in anticipation of, generally the Saturday before the weekend of Chalkawak. So that will be happening this Saturday, hopefully it'll be good weather. And also note that the school district is not public with the fact that they're engaged with Schneidhatter, I believe, on a traffic study, which may have some implications for the city eventually, but maybe there's engaging with that relatively quickly here, and we'll see where that goes. And it's an engineer architect with Schneidhatter who lives on Palisades Road, who lives in the area, so that's, so that's three things I was gonna mention. Any council reports?
The Mount Vernon Lisbon Childcare Solutions Committee met last week, and we have, we have raised about a hundred thousand dollars. We've given away about seventy thousand to help retain childcare workers in Lisbon and Mount Vernon, and, and the hiring of new. And especially for the Lisbon Early Childhood Center and for Kids Club, which is both moving into a for-profit status. And so there was a lot of debate on what we're gonna do with the thirty thousand that we still have. And we've decided that we are going to make a ten thousand dollar gift to both of those entities in the form of Gary's gift cards. So we'll help local employers as well. And we're going to do that on the ninth, and anyway. And we're also, I think I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, but Gary's is gonna help us with a roundup in the first two weeks of May to help with some fundraising as well. And the biggest question we have right now is what will that group look like moving forward? Knowing that there, there's a really big project out there with LBC, and we're working off of the study that we've done through the architecture of him, whether or not we want to, or have to wear it all, to build a childcare center. Because our seventy thousand will look like small kids, small kids with what we're gonna need for that, so.
Cover a psych truck, yeah. Staging, great.
Just to create where they're gonna put the trailers.
Any other committee reports?
Not really a committee report, but just one note, because we won't have a meeting between now and then. Chalkawak comes up the first weekend of May. My understanding is still looking for volunteers, so opportunity is there. Also, that Saturday morning, at eleven o'clock, is the VJU chat presentation from T-Mobile, which is very exciting, fifty grand. And I don't know if you've driven by there, but they've got a new sign, and they have new awnings for the marquee, and the whole, yeah, they look sharp, so. So people are welcome and encouraged to join for that presentation.
Sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier, I was just wondering about the test of the audit.
Yeah, we're waiting for good weather to take pictures. So we've got some pictures, but we need to complete that, so. Still working on it.
Any other courts, council, administration, anything else? Anything else that needs to come forward this tour? Otherwise, we are adjourned, thank you very much. Thanks for your work on the budget, guys. I'll clean the office. Till next year.
Next year might be quite the blast.